Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker. Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Gozwami.
Here.
Ms. Guas.
Here.
Mrs. Herrick.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Dr. James.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you sit, um, unfortunately we lost one of our own today, and so we're going to be doing a moment of silence um, in memoriam for Eugene Selby. He passed away on September 25th, 2024. After retiring from the New Brunswick Police Department, Eugene joined the district in 2019 as a school security officer. While he initially served in this role at Churchill, he spent the majority of his years of service here at Hammershould. His dedication to keeping the school community safe was unwavering. He will truly be missed. Our thoughts and heartfelt sympathies are with his loved ones. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of this videotaping rules. Good evening, my few. I know you'll be joined later. Um, as we do at each meeting, we're going to go into closed session, so I'm going to ask for a motion where the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in public meeting, and these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, afterwards the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Hong, welcome. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We will see you and those that decide to join you in about an hour.
Okay. Not much to see at this point, but in a few seconds you may be able to hear the bus driver radioing base to advise that a car is following the school bus with horn blowing. The vehicle's driver is attempting to stop the school bus. Let's proceed with the video. Too far. Let's pause it there, please. Karen? Okay, thank you. So, in a moment, you'll see a child crossing to board the school bus from the opposite side of the street. So from the top left-hand corner of the screen, crossing over to the, to the right side of the screen. As the child comes around, hold on. As the child comes around the school bus, you'll see a vehicle passing the bus on the right side and then crossing in front of the school bus to block the bus from proceeding. That vehicle was on the sidewalk as it passed the school bus. The vehicle driver was a parent whose child was not at the bus stop as required. The parent alleged that the child was waiting in the parent's car, and if actually that was the case, the child was not seen by the bus driver. In this case, the following charges were filed against the parent. The first four were motor vehicle violations, obstructing the passage of other vehicles, improper passing on the right or off roadway, reckless driving, and improperly passing a school bus. The last two were from the Code of Criminal Justice. Those two charges were filed by the East Brunswick Police Department, disorderly conduct, and interference with transportation. In this case, the parent was found guilty on all charges. We cannot, cannot stress enough to not do any of these things that put anyone in danger. Do not interfere with the operation of a school bus. If you have issues, call. If you have concerns regarding safety, call the police. But under no circumstances should anyone be taking under their own accord action to try to address an issue. Thank you.
I actually heard gasps when the car almost hit the student.
As there should be.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce.
Sure.
If I could real quick, uh, Joyce, I just wanted to thank you and your team, um, for all of your hard work. My, my, as people know, I've shared, I have three kids. Our bus drivers are incredible people. Um, I have full and utmost trust in, in the care that they provide for every child on the bus. Um, I, I sometimes go crazy when I have one of my kids in my car with me. So the fact that they, uh, you know, are taking that on and doing it so safely, um, and, and, you know, doing it with the community in play as well. So I just, I, they're incredible people, and I, I have such, um, I, I just value them so greatly. So thank you and your team for your oversight.
Thank you for that. Yeah, definitely transportation would not be where it is today without the bus drivers and the aides and doing the job that they do. So we do appreciate your support, and we do appreciate the fact that you recognize us.
And that's top-down, because you've been known to be riding buses, checking on safety, you do it all, so.
Four in the morning.
Yep. Four in the morning.
Six in the morning.
Six in the morning.
You're late.
You're late.
Yeah, you know, you get, no older, you get a little slower.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hong?
Hey Joyce, thank you very much for compiling this rule's responsibility. For me as a parent, so I entrust my children to you and your team, transporting them to and to school and from school to home. You guys are doing fair, beautiful job, and I urge all East Brunswick parents, let's cooperate with the bus drivers. Let's help them, because we, you send your children to the school, and we are partners. Let's work together, help your own children, help other children, to make this community safer, better. Thank you for your team. Very good job.
Thank you. Mrs. Becker?
Also just want to give a shout out to the school crossing guards.
Yes.
A very important partner with our transportation team. I live on a corner that is a bus stop for two of our schools. There's two crosswalks, three cross, crosswalks, and one crossing guard monitoring all of them. I have seen people drive right past the crossing guard when they're standing there with, with the stop sign. And the crossing guards at some point during the year have a real sense of when a bus, once the buses are really on track of when a bus will come, and they're, they're trying to get the kids in place ahead of time. And people are in such a rush to commute or get wherever they're going. As long as the bus isn't there, they feel they can just pass a crossing guard, cut through kids, um, approaching the crosswalk. They do a tremendous job, and I, I think that people need to have a lot more respect for, for when they put up their stop sign. It's the same thing as a bus putting out its, its stop sign, do not pass.
I agree with you 100%.
Thank you again so much. That's okay. I appreciate it. Um, Dr. Valeski, believe you are giving us a self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights for the period ending June 30th, 2024, and this is a public hearing?
It is a public hearing, yes. So as President Lacks said, this is our annual self-assessment. The self-assessment consists of eight core elements. The HIV, it's kind of small, so you can't see it, so I'm gonna unfortunately read part of this. It's the HIV program itself and the approaches, the training, uh, staff instructional and training programs, the curriculum and instruction related to HIVs. Our HIV personnel, did they perform all of, or some of their duties? Do we have a school safety team at each of our schools? And how many times did the school safety team meet? It's a requirement they meet at least twice a year. Our reporting procedures are included in this evaluation, the investigation procedures, and ensuring there's a procedure that all staff report all incidents and how we train and communicate that among the staff. The process is that we have this public hearing, it's made available for public comment. The self-assessment results must be approved by the Board of Education and submitted to the state by the end of October, October 31st. And the school districts grade is the average of all grades of each school within the district. And it's the school safety team that actually is charged with assigning the ratings based on the criteria and the documentation they collect, uh, through each HIV event. The scoring is on a scale of zero to three, with zero meaning not meeting the requirements and three exceeding the requirements. The focus for last school year was the, uh, our relationship with the New Jersey School Climate Improvement Platform, and we partnered with Rutgers University and the Department of Education on their new climate data collection system. Our anti-bullying specialists received training, surveys were administrated, administered in each building to students, parents, and teachers. And this determined the needs and possible programming for this year. The climate safety teams continue to meet and focus on school climate, and we're gonna concentrate on anti-bias activities as well as mindfulness strategies, health, and wellness. And as you can see, over the past three years, our, including this year, our score is a perfect 78. So all the requirements in the self-assessment were met. So the student services that are beyond, uh, just the academics, the important parts I want to highlight of this list are the individual group counseling sessions, the, a collaboration with outside providers to make referrals for outside resources. And one of the most important that I think is conducted by the staff is the suicide risk and threat assessment. But you can see there is an extensive, uh, amount of work that is provided by our CSCs, our school counselors, and student assistance specialists to our students. And this kind of breaks down the area of support from our child study team, our student assistance specialist, who also are the anti-bullying specialist and investigate each HIV, and our school counselors. And again, you can see a pretty comprehensive list of responsibilities among each of those three categories of highly trained and professional individuals. Again, this year, um, we're, this was from last year, but we're gonna continue this year with Effective School Solutions. Uh, although acknowledged that we do have, um, we had budgetary constraints this year. We are working with Effective School Solutions to, uh, deploy a variety of services, and we're using our existing staff. Effective School Solutions has indicated that, um, they are beginning to utilize an insurance reimbursement model so that, and we're gonna meet on that, so that parent paid, uh, or parents' insurance will be, uh, responsible for some of the therapeutic supports that are given to students and families, which will provide opportunities for the district to provide more resources to more people. But our case managers, school counselors, and student assistance specialists make the referrals. ESS provides therapeutic intervention to our most at-risk. And we are concentrating anger management, substance abuse, and bereavement, and monthly parental support, and of course, always professional development for this important staff. So this is a, as I said, it's a mandatory self-assessment, but this is just paper and, uh, images on a screen. And what I want to mention is the people behind the scenes that really are the important people that make this happen. And in the back of this room is Mrs. Blaylock, who coordinates the HIV. Danielle, would you mind standing up? She's a very important and critical and visible person in the district that makes sure that we, we do everything with the utmost, you know, attention to detail, uh, and making sure we're compliant with the law.
She's an angel among us, actually. I'll go a step further.
Yeah, and I want to also give credit to all of our school principals. They're the officials where the HIV initiates. I want to give credit to our 18 student assistant anti-bullying specialists who do the investigations. And I want to give credit to, uh, Ms. Karen Keegan, who takes care of all the paperwork and makes sure that we're all compliant and making sure that if we have an appeal to our HIV, that she has everything ready to go and is prepared for the board for those hearings. So that concludes the public hearing presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Excellent team. Are there any members of the public this evening that would like to speak to this and this, um, presentation only? We will have, just to let you all know, we will have a time for public comment on any other topics. But yes.
Good evening, everyone. Lou Figaro, 101 Ruslan. Thank you, Dr. Valeski, for that in-depth report. Um, I assume you're the ABC for the district?
I am.
Okay. So, just a quick, couple of quick questions. In your research during the course of the year, one of the things that the state wants to know is, are there any areas of concern, for instance, HIVs, if they're more on the buses or if they're in the lunchrooms or in the hallways? Can you tell us a little bit about what you came up with in your research and what training that you'd like to give to help us mitigate that?
Sir, this is, it's not a Q and A. You can ask your questions, and then the board can respond.
Fine. That's really not, it should go to him, not to me. He was gonna answer. I'm just asking.
I'm just saying, there should not be back and forth.
I'm just asking a question, whether he responds or not. I just, that's a question.
You can ask a question, and then...
Okay, that was a question that I had. Also during, do you want to speak to him?
No, Dr. Valeski.
I don't want to get in the middle of the two of you.
It's, it's three minutes, so. Let him finish. Okay. His question. Okay.
Okay. Lastly, I know as the ABC that you attend the student assistance specialist meetings on a monthly basis. It's just part of the reason why we have a 78 score for the last three years. Actually, it goes a little further than that. During those meetings, um, you, what kind of support and advice have we given to the student assistance specialists that are overwhelmed at times during the course of the year and could use that administrative assistance? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Figaro. Just procedurally, does he then answer the question now, and then I'll ask the next question to come up?
No, we should, just like public comment, you take all the questions.
Oh, okay.
When it's done, then you answer.
Okay, I just wanted to ask to make sure. Okay.
Same way.
All right. Sorry, I'm learning every day. Um, is there anyone else that has any comments or questions on this particular?
Can the board ask questions?
After public comments close.
Okay. Okay, then I'm gonna close the public part of this. Um, and yes, if there's board members that have questions as well, Mrs. Becker, right?
Thank you. Um, coincidentally, first of all, I was also going to mention, um, a presentation that Danielle Blaylock gave to the board. I don't, Danielle, I don't remember how many years ago, but I told you at the time, and I still maintain, it was probably one of the best presentations I've ever seen done. It was so comprehensive about the extent of programs that we have in this district. The, the board and central office were just amazed. We, we, we weren't even cognizant of the extent of it. I know that there used to be a link on our district webpage to this presentation. Um, if there isn't, um, we should make sure it's there again. And I think it could also be Danielle. It, it is there, but I think it could be updated. Make more work for you, sorry, but it, again, I maintain it was one of the best presentations ever shown to the board. The other question I had was for Dr. Valeski about the school safety teams. And again, you can, I can answer this tonight, whenever you can get back to, um, the board. It seems that there's a tremendous amount under their purview, and I was just curious if you could tell us something more about the makeup of these teams. I'm assuming it's a mix of building, administration, staff, support staff. I'd also like to know if there are parents on, um, the school safety team. I want to know if, um, participation rotates, if once a team is, is chosen. Is there a new people put in place each year? And who would they be accountable to? Would it be, would it be you? Would it be the building administrator? I just wanted to know a little bit more about the safety team. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Mr. Hong?
Yes, uh, Dr. Valeski, I'm sorry. So, Dr. Valeski, can you elaborate more about the job, uh, the school district did for the suicide risk and the threat assessment? So what kind of job did, did, are you doing to, to minimize the suicide risk and assess the threat happening, uh, with, with the school? Or if you need more time, you know, we can talk next, next meeting. And, uh, can you answer that question, or you need more time?
Well, I was gonna get all the questions.
Yep, that's fine.
Conclude the hearing, and then I was gonna answer the questions.
Okay. Dr. James?
Yeah, and, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you.
Uh, since, since I was elected about eight years ago, and the school district, the scores is, has been always 78 points. So, you know, I personally have want sent Lou, he did very good job for past years.
Okay. Dr. James?
Thank you. Dr. Valeski, I was just wondering if you could talk a bit more about the role of the anti-bullying specialist and how that, that may differ at the different grade levels and in the different buildings. Thank you.
Okay. And Mrs. Herrick, I now have a question.
So, um, mine's not really a question, more a, I guess, comment. Is that okay? Is that okay? So, um, just, uh, I know, um, surveys and finding out information about parents and students and teachers, um, in the district is very important. Um, so I'm very happy that we partnered with Rutgers to do this survey back in, um, April. I actually then went to my email as a parent, and it gave information from Mr. Hannes back in April, which provided information about the survey and that it was anonymous and voluntary, and that the data would be used to make improvements to the school, um, and that it was gonna be administered to all students. And then there was a link to the parent or caregiver survey, and then obviously it's, was given to teachers as well. Um, the board was provided information regarding the findings for the upper grades, and I also know that Dr. Valeski has, um, the information for the lower grades. And I, I, I'm hopeful that in the future we can have, um, higher participation rates among all, um, parents, caregivers, staff, um, students. It's really important. Um, I've been looking over the data that was provided, and it, it shows a really strong bond between parent, uh, between teachers and students, and students seem to really trust, um, their teachers. And I think, um, there was a lot of data in it, so we're just starting to go over it as a board. But, um, information like this is very helpful to, um, addressing the climate of the school. So I, I'm happy that we did this, and I hope that we will continue, um, to do it.
Thank you, Mrs. Guo. Oh, Mrs. Reese, sorry.
I just, but they're, one of the responsibilities of school counselors is facilitating, thank you, college fairs and college visits, and I know they're doing a lot more things than they have, you know, each year they add to, they, what they do. So maybe in the future we could do a presentation about some of the wonderful things that they're doing, because it's becoming more and more difficult to get into college, and there's more and more requirements than when we went to, we, we applied to college. And I know that we cover a breadth of services, and maybe some of the parents are not aware of some of the things that we provide at the, at the high school level.
Thank you. Mrs. Guo, did, would your hand up?
I did.
Okay.
I did. Um, I just wanted to add that I appreciate that the student services and the supports are there for the suicide risk and threat assessment, um, because the more that we can do in-house, you know, if a child's at risk, if you have to send them out for these assessments, um, it's scarier for the family. It's scarier for the kids, and the more that can be done in-house with people that they trust, um, the more accurate, I think, of a gauge we can get of, you know, where a child's at. I also just wanted to thank the people in the schools that are working on this for making it so age-appropriate, because while, you know, I mean, I was at parent, parent senior, or senior parent night the other night, and I'm amazed at the amount of college visits that they did again this year, because they did it last year, and they did it again this year, and they presented it to all the parents. It was great. But I also appreciate the level of support and putting parents in touch with services for kids that need at the high school level. But I also appreciate at the elementary school level that my six-year-old on the playground the other day told me that that kid over there was bullying her. And I paused, because I had been watching, and she paused on her own, and she's like, no, it's not bullying. It's not meeting expectations, though. And I appreciate, I mean, she won't watch this, so it's fine. But I appreciate that in this early month, or early weeks of the second grade, she's already learning the right words for things to express what's happening to her, that people are teaching her what this is and what that is. And, you know, obviously, the staff is talking about it with the littlest people, because she's already knowing what the expectations are, that bullying is something that's very specific. And she even talked about, you know, who you go to for help, and then I got a lesson in iMessages. So I just wanted to say, with all of these supports, I do appreciate how much the district individualizes for each grade level for the kids.
Okay, Mr. Gozwami?
I have three questions. So as I'm learning more, more every day, so this NJ SCI is a very good thing. So I was first off, I want to know, other than the specialist who is into that squad, also the board member can get the training of the anti-bullying? Because I am also a parent, because I have started hearing about, and my son speaks, oh, that kid bullied other kid, as you mentioned. So I also want to learn more about this. If it is possible for a board member, or anybody who is interested to learn, can I also go for it? First question. Second question is, you mentioned 78, 78, 78, three years. Is it the benchmark score? Or is it the normal average score? Or what, and if it is not benchmark, what is the benchmark?
Okay.
Seventy-eight. Seventy-eight. Under sixty. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
All right. I'm going to tackle the questions.
You got a lot of questions.
I'm asking Mrs. Blaylock to help me with a couple of things, because I think that, what I heard too, is the importance of the presentation that you did do with Mrs. Solana LaRaca years ago. I think we need to repeat that again. But the, let me start with the data. We, every time we do an investigation, it's logged in a software program called Hipster. So that is a repository where the report goes. It's available for review by various levels. And as a final review, I go in, I review each of the HIV reports, and I recommend them up to the board. So if it's met all the criteria, that process is now a communication with Mrs. Blaylock. So we make sure that every, all the elements are there, that it's, everything's legitimate. It gets sent up to the board, it gets put on a board agenda, so you approve it. That starts the process for a parent if they want to make an appeal to the Board of Education. We've had a couple of those in the past. Hipster has a very strong data repository, so we're able to go in and do reports, we're able to look at specific schools, locations within schools, and look at trends within that system. We've already started doing that. One of the things that I'm going to present probably later before the, before the December board meeting, is we're looking at the number of unconfirmed, or the HIVs that are unfounded, the ones that the investigation reveals that there's, there's no evidence of HIV. Because we have a student code of conduct, and we have our HIV laws. In some of these cases, these are or may be student code of conduct issues. Now, with the law change, if a student is charged with an HIV, that is part of their permanent record. So if we can remediate and have, if there are issues with student code of conduct and deal with those as codes of conduct, we want to do that. But that's going to be an investigation with the principals, or not investigation, but a commitment with the principals to fulfill that role. As ABC coordinator, I'm going to continue to expand my knowledge of that capacity. I did just recently attend the specialist meeting that Mrs. Blaylock had for elementary and secondary folks. Mrs. Blaylock established goals for the upcoming year. So that was our initial meeting, but we're going to continue to meet, and I plan to be with them at every single meeting, so we can share and I can support them. Mrs. Blaylock, on the school safety teams, they also are tasked with threat assessment responsibilities now. So could you talk about that first a little bit?
Right. So our student assistant specialists wear many hats. Anti-bullying specialist, counselor to our students. They also conduct our risk assessments, which is suicidal ideation. We use the Columbia scale. And we also do threat to others. So if there's ever a concern that a student has made a threatening statement or action towards another student, they work with the grade-level administrator or the building principal to assess the level of threat and determine what support services we feel are appropriate for that student.
Thank you. The question was about the role of the anti-bullying specialist. That was, we may have gone by it a little bit. There was, actually, in your presentation, the student assistant specialist responsibilities are delegated in the next last page of the report. They take care of, in addition to being five of four coordinators, there are safety and climate teams, social emotional programming is part of their responsibility, substance abuse, support counseling, and building DCP, or DCPP and homeless displaced responsibilities. I also want Mrs. Blaylock to talk about the homeless, the trend in homelessness that we're seeing into last year and also this year.
Yeah, unfortunately. So I've had the opportunity to lead the student assistant specialists for the past twelve years. When I first started in this position, after I left being a school counselor at Hammershold, we had five homeless students. Last year, we had seventy-two. So this population has grown for us in East Brunswick exponentially. Our student assistant specialists are the primary caretakers of those students within the building. The families come and meet with me. I provide them as much resources as possible, and then collaborate with our student assistant specialists to continue to support the family while they're going through these difficult times. Oftentimes, they're not stable with food. Obviously, they're not stable with housing, which results in a lot of emotional distress for the students as well. So these families need a lot of our support.
And if you could for just a second, it's a little bit off this desk, but take credit for the room that you now have and what you're storing in that room.
So the things that excite me as the supervisor of student services. So we had such a tremendous outpouring this year for our back-to-school drive, our supply drive. We also got a tremendous amount, which was wonderful, of Walmart gift cards from our families, from some local churches, from the AOCC in town. And this helps to provide our students with brand-new shoes or a nice new outfit for back-to-school. And we were able to get through Dr. Valeski's help, our own storage closet in the building. So I have tons of supplies, as well as non-perishable food bags, as well as hygiene bags, to provide all these families. And I had two come in this week, and a dad who cried in my office because he couldn't believe the support that we were able to give him and his fifth-grade daughter. So thank you for the support and being able to help us to provide all this for our families. They truly appreciate it.
I think what it goes to show is that if we create a safe environment for our students, and they feel supported, and the families feel supported, then the opportunities for behaving in ways that rise to levels of HIV will be mitigated. And so we're really trying to support our students and families that way. So I thank Mrs. Blaylock for all the work that she does there. Also, the last thing I think we didn't cover, because you mentioned the Columbia self-assessment, or the threat assessment for suicide.
So there's the risk assessment, which is suicide ideation that we use the Columbia for. And then we have our own threat assessment model, which was based off of the state's recommendation. Last year, we developed our own, but it was based off of the state's training that they have implemented.
And, you know, I applaud the staff, because there are times during, and it's happened already this school year, where we have, we see behaviors with students, or we see a situation, you know, that happens during the school day, where a student's behaving in not a typical fashion. You know, maybe they, they're just, they're just avoiding going home for some reason. So the staff is very quick to evaluate and to look into those kinds of situations with students that might be under some kind of stress, emotional stress, to provide that support right away and to intervene before something elevates to that next level. And the last thing was about the scoring. The scoring is based on a self-assessment, so that is, if we meet all the criteria, then there's a perfect score of seventy-eight, or a top score of seventy-eight. So that just means that we have done our self-assessment, we have met all the requirements that the state has given to us for the programming. But that, that doesn't mean that, you know, we shouldn't look beyond that and try to improve what we do. And I think that's what you see with Mrs. Blaylock and her team, and all the administrators in the building, is continuing to build out and build a more robust system that is more attuned to our students' needs. And that immediacy is so important, because when we have a situation between students, that resolution of conflict with students and what we do next is really important, because we don't want them to repeat that behavior.
If I can make a suggestion with the scoring, because I think for some of the newer board members, when you see seventy-eight, I think most of us go to a C-plus in our brains. So it may be helpful if we could, and I'm seeing when you're asking with that, if we could.
It's on a curve.
I understand that. I'm just saying, in future presentations, maybe you say seventy-eight out of, you know, out of seventy-eight.
Okay, we could do that.
That's just a suggestion.
We could do that.
Because I'm sure some of you had the same, you know, thing as Mr..
Yeah, seventy-eight is seventy-eight. For the past three years, it has been, we've met all the requirements.
Because I know you asked that question, and so that, you know, it's a hundred percent.
Okay. So I have a question for Ms. Blaylock. So your closet still have a space that is already full, or you have still space?
We will make some space.
So I asked within the last meeting that I have contacted some organization who is willing to donate a lot of school supplies. So they are ready with that, but I could not get response yet about whom to deliver. So I will meet you next week if I get the...
Sure. We would happily accept more. Karen has been helping me. My secretary, Adrian, has been helping me. So we will gladly accept and make sure it gets into the right hands.
So I will meet you next week.
Okay, very good. And if I could just say for one second, that I know you had referenced the presentation that I had done back a few years ago. I can't say enough what my staff does day in and day out. I couldn't do this job without them. And the work that they do is very private and confidential, which is why a lot of people don't know about it. But it's really amazing work, what they do to take care of our kids. So I thank them for the work that they do every day.
And thank you.
And thank you, yep.
And that's, that's why the score has been that way for the last, you know, three years, is because of that work of all of these people. It has nothing to do with me. It has to do with all those people that are boots-on-the-ground and dealing with our students every single day.
Laura?
Absolutely.
Just, Danielle, the best thing about that presentation was the fact that it showed all the resources available for the students. Not negating the fact that your staff are the ones who provide either, you know, their, their coaches or advisors to the extracurriculars or clubs. But the amount of resources available to our students at every grade was incredible. And you had it, I think it was by age or by area, and it was, it was opened our eyes to things we didn't know. And I'm sure that that's why I said it's absolutely due for an update, because we've added so many things. But it, it was, it's still on the website? There's a link to it? Every, every parent should watch it to see what's available to our kids. It's an eye-opener. It was wonderful.
Great. Mr. Hung?
So Danielle, thank you very much for the best job you did. It's very helpful. And Victor, thank you too. So I want to emphasize, when you help those students, they need help. Normally, they come from low-income or disabled or whatever, disadvantaged family. Please do it in a nice way, because those students are very sensitive. You know, don't let them feel they're embarrassed. So I know you guys are doing a very job, very good job. I just want to emphasize it. Do it in the right way. Support them, let them enjoy the, the support from the community. And then in future, they can help them instead of this, oh, I'm from bad situation, disadvantaged. So just last emphasis.
I can tell you, from working with her for years, that her discretion, you've never seen anything like it.
No, you don't.
And she's actually too modest to tell you some of the stuff that she's done herself and taken from her own family and given. And I'm laughing when you said you'd make room, because knowing you, you would do it in your own house. So I promise you that any of the families that she deals with, her people, they probably feel is loved and supported, and there's not a threat of insecurity or embarrassment, because that woman is a true professional, and you have a heart of gold. And I just, and we've worked with her so many years. And yeah, I promise you that your concerns are valid, but she's, she's the person to make sure that that person never feels.
Highly confidential.
Yeah, I agree with all you said, but I just try to put it emphasized, because we're dealing with very young-age children. So that's all.
Dr. Valeski, and President Lacks, one other thing I just want to, from a, from a legal perspective, parents have the right to appeal to the board, and then from the board, they can go to the Commission of Education. The law was passed in, I believe, 2010 or 11.
2010, probably.
So in fourteen years, there's been one appeal from the board. And the reason I think that happens is that the, the investigations are so thorough, so complete, so well-balanced, that when the parents come in and hear it, they don't appeal it. And there was one appeal, and it wasn't successful. That was many years ago. But I can tell you that that's not the case in a lot of districts. So again, I think that Ms. Blaylock and the training she works with her team, they do an incredible job. And it's consistent across all the different schools when we have these HIV appeals, just in terms of the content, the robust reports, the interviews, et cetera. And it goes a long way. And frankly, it's, it's helpful for, you know, the district, because you're not incurring legal fees fighting these things out in court. It ends right here at the district level. So the public should be aware of that too.
Thank you. Okay. So now I'm actually going to open the Good or the Cause for the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. We will have a participant limited to three minutes duration. Lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board secretary. And I always do let people know that this is, it's okay. Your time to speak to the board. Anything that needs follow-up, we have the women in the second row there will take any of your contact information, and answers will be forthcoming. And if I could ask you, Dom, everyone that comes to the podium, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Dom Scolfani to Morgan Place. I'm here to address some issues from last meeting. Number one, I find incredibly hypocritical that you talk about respecting one another, yet you berated people who weren't here to defend themselves. And what the superintendent did last meeting when talking about Dr. Figueroa, that was not respectful. Yet you had nothing to say about that. Number two, Dr. Valeski, you basically said, well, the contract was never signed, so it's okay. But if someone plans to rob a bank, and people find out about the plans to rob the bank, you still get in trouble for planning to rob the bank. It's the intent that matters. Number three, you bought up Dr. Figueroa's credentials, which I found to be very childish. Not only was his certificate up to date, but even if it was expired, wouldn't it be on you or the HR director to make sure it got renewed? Four, board members, you say this job is tough, and you're a volunteer, and I do commend you on deciding to run and spend your time here. However, that is not an excuse to use when the going gets tough. I'm a volunteer EMT in another town, and it's a tough job. I don't want to do CPR on someone's parent or child. I don't have to wait, I don't want to have to wake up at 3:00 AM for a car accident. But I signed up for it. And if I can't handle the job or situation, I don't sit around and complain about it. I ask my partner to take the lead, so the patient gets the best possible care. So if you can't handle the position you say you've served in for so many years, perhaps let someone like Figueroa, Falco, Figueroa, and Braun take over. They will ensure the students and staff of EB get the care they deserve, and ensure inclusion, integrity, and innovation returned to East Brunswick Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dom.
Good evening again, everyone. Lou Figueroa, 101 Ruse Lane. First, I want to agree with the board and thank you folks for seeing all the good work that Danielle Blaylock and her team does. You also mentioned Louise Sultana LaRaca, another phenomenal student services member and our Director of Special Education. You have Vanessa Amatoro also, who runs our guidance department. These are the backbone of our student services. They had been for years, and they will continue to do so. But I thank you for acknowledging them. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after seeing Dr. Valeski's presentation this evening, he mentioned miscommunication. So I guess I want to clarify a little bit, because my understanding is a little different. We have, I want to go back to the May 24th meeting, I believe. It was our recognition meeting for our staff, our faculty. Great night. I believe it was that night that the board, and the incumbents included, voted to charge the PTAs in the booster clubs for using our buildings. That doesn't sound like miscommunication. That sounds like you made a decision, and now we're going back saying, all right, let's correct the decision, which is fine, if that's what it is. So I'm trying to understand, and again, I know you won't answer me right now, but I'm trying to understand the difference between miscommunication and trying to cover up something that we might have done wrong. And that, listen, we all make mistakes. So if that's it, at least I think that accountability would be important for us to know as a community. I also think that this word miscommunication has been coming up so much, and I think it's being misused. So I want to clear the record right now. I would agree, and I hope that the ten- I would agree, and I hope that the 10 people who are running for the Board of Education would agree with me. I think a debate would be something this community would really enjoy. Talk about the issues, talk about whatever it might be, cell phones, voting, budget, whatever it might be. I think we probably could do better than Donald and Kamala, but if not, okay. But I do think that this would give people a chance to see. The people on this board that I know are fantastic people. I think you got on the board for the right reasons. I just think at some point, at some point, we have misstepped. And I think the word miscommunication might be a euphemism that we can use at this point, but I do think that we need to let the public know what we're all about and that at the end, we all want to work together. Because we should have one goal in mind, and that's to make sure that we take care of our students and our families in this district. And that's all that we're about. So I would like to put it out there. You all know how to get in touch with me. And if you don't, the two lovely young ladies over there will let you know how. And we can make this happen. As a matter of fact, I hope... Is that for me?
Yeah.
Can I just finish? I hope on October 6th that we can all be together. And I think we have a couple of tables together. We can talk, we can communicate, we can maybe share some ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Jessica Lippert, 506 Reva Avenue. This is my first Board of Ed meeting. So ashamed. I am here tonight with the express permission from my nine-year-old son, who is a student at Hammer Schulz. He's in the ERI program. And on A days, he is segregated from his peers. He spends the entirety of the day in ERI with Mr. Chup, who is phenomenal. But for lunch and physical education, he is placed with sixth-grade students. This is woefully inappropriate developmentally and socially. I have escalated it. I look forward to an upcoming IEP meeting, but I don't think you realize what's going on, that students in our district are being segregated. He is nine. He is so bright and so charismatic. And on his first day of school, he came home anticipating, in his words, so forgive me, that A days are going to suck. He's not with his friends at all. I am also not convinced that anybody has read his IEP because the recommendation was that he push out into ILA, which is his triggering subject. So I encourage you to talk to the school-level special education staff who do the scheduling because this is not, this isn't what we signed up for. This is not what I thought. I would not have signed off on his IEP on June 4th if I knew my kid would be segregated. This is, however, a fortuitous meeting. Joyce is wonderful, and she has helped tremendously with transportation issues. I also appreciate the ESS program. I was very disappointed to get a phone call on September 11th letting me know that it was no longer being implemented at Hammer Schulz. My son has been receiving Tier III services from ESS, and I received a phone call from his case manager letting me know that ESS was being moved to Churchill. And that a student assistance specialist would be providing the same service. We have received ESS services in the past. Those are some big shoes to fill. And I've not received any communication suggesting that monthly parent meetings will be taking place, that the therapeutic services he was receiving through ESS will be provided. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention because I think in this district, there is a severe lack of transparency. And I appreciate what you do from this DAS, but there are some unfortunate things that happen at the school level. Yes, I'm aware. Thank you.
And your information...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you let Karen and Janet?
Sure.
Karen just raised her hand. If you give her, and we'll contact you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lippert.
Hi, friends. Jamie Falco, Six Garfield. New house, same bear. What? Yeah, I moved three streets away from where I grew up. I moved all, I lived all over North America. I used to work for welfare in Mexico, providing specialty eye care down there. Came back to East Brunswick because I love this town. I love our schools. I like all of you. I hold no personal ill will. I believe in the intrinsic altruism. That does exist. I believe in the greater good. I'm trying to run a campaign with my colleagues that shows that. That's why we chose integrity, inclusion, and innovation. I wasn't planning to speak. Just the mood struck me. I didn't write anything. But I do want to elaborate a little bit on the last speaker. I think one of the challenges in the district, based on my homework, is that the state funding formula only accounts for 15.7% of our demographic to have special education needs. That affects our funding. If we're at about 20%, last I heard, that's 78.5% of funding we're receiving from the state. That residual amount for about 1,625 students, if we're at about 8,100 enrollment, we're 20% sufficient on their funds just from the state. I get the budget issue. I understand it. I want to help. So please, you know, anything I can do to support you, whether I'm sitting up there or whether it's from here, I really care about this district. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Falco.
Good evening. Jeff Winston, 44 Fresh Pond Road. I want to add a little more context. You know, you showed that video tonight, and I'll be, you know, full and fair transparent. When I saw this video as a board member, I was horrified by what I saw. And I'm not diminishing that. But a little more context to that video, which of course wasn't mentioned, that I actually have an email copy where President Lacks showed a willingness to set up a communication between the gentleman that you had seen. But that's okay. She wasn't able to do that. And I also have an email copy from Dr. Valeski to the individual you saw on the screen, but I'll talk about it in a minute. But I think what's really sad about what you did is the TikTok video that you were so compelled to show. That gentleman, outsider Juliana and outsider Valeski, lives in this town and has a ninth-grade child in this town with an IEP and a 504. And you were sure to show his face on that screen. That is bullying. Where's Ms. Blaylock to help with that? You don't do that. Excuse me, I'm talking. It's my time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. You don't do that to a resident of this community. But instead, you decided to run your victory lap. This case was tried, he was found guilty, and is dealing with the penalties. It was over. But that's okay. I don't want to use up all my time on that. It's just a disgusting display what you did tonight. And in that, in a letter that Dr. Valeski had written to this gentleman, he wrote that the Board of Education Transportation Director fully trained all drivers. All right, so I'm glad you showed that video because I'm wondering if you're going to show this video. The video will be from an accident that occurred on the 19th of September where two summonses were issued to your bus driver in this district as a hit-and-run with a full busload of kids and leaving the scene. Will that video be shown, Mr. Juliana? Do you have that? Oh, by the way, that was my son's car who was hit. So please spare me your little victory lap and waving your victory flag. What you did tonight is disgusting. You did it. You finished that case, but you had to come back. Why? Because that gentleman's supporting some candidates that you don't want elected? You're a disgusting person, Mr. Juliana, for what you did tonight. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston.
Danielle Vito, 23 Bradford Road. I'm reaching out to seek clarity on communication processes between the community and the board. I attended the last meeting and requested confirmation of the board members' email addresses, but it's been a month and I've only received one response from one board member personally. From what I understand, board members may be restricted from responding to emails, answering questions during these board meetings, and engaging with the public via social media. Given these limitations, I'm struggling to understand why there isn't a mechanism in place for community members to engage in some form of dialogue with the board. I think there's a number of topics that parents have questions about, need clarification on, or want you to know about, such as what's going on here, but don't feel like they have a mechanism to do so in a more broad fashion. I'm sure many of us believe that having more opportunities for communication would benefit both the board and the community. So I'm hoping after this meeting, you can address this in some capacity.
Thank you, Mrs. Vito.
Jack Levitt, 4 Springfield Road. I'm fresh off back-to-school nights for the East Brunswick Education Foundation, where I'm proud to say we sold apples and raised $4,500 for the EBEF Student Association. But what I got, thank you. What I got to thinking about, let me use my time. What I got to thinking about was the topic of diversity because I was watching this all through the week. Not the topics that we were talking about with, when the yearbook thing came up, but in our school communities. Each of our school communities is fascinating. Bound has their morning meetings where all the kids get together in the gym and then they dance and do all these things. You can go to Warren Storeford and have a robot greet you at the door and take you back to the Shone Creation Station. Frost has its garden of learning outside, which is about to get an upgrade with the help of some members on the board, and I appreciate that. Central has that mural depicting the community right in the front. And every community has something different that's pretty amazing. I can't go on because I'm being timed and they took some of my time over there. But I wish that you could all see this. It's there. It's there every day. I know you go out and visit, and there are very official visits that the board takes, but why not go out and just visit because you can, you know, walk through? Let kids see that there are adults who care about their education. Let them figure out that the board members are walking around just looking, not with a clipboard, not with, you know, some kind of inspection, just because they're there. Let them know your faces. Let the teachers know your faces. And I want to go a layer deeper into the diversity of the classrooms because we have a lot of students who learn differently. And we have a lot of teachers who teach differently, and we pride ourselves on the teachers that we hire. And we hire them, we hire great talent, and we give them a great curriculum to teach. But we need to let them be themselves in the classroom. I had a debate with Trudy Atkins when she was in Community Relations. We were talking about a fifth-grade class where one teacher wanted a gram for an electronic microscope, and she said, but there's another science teacher across the hall who won't have one. And the debate was, should we let one and not the other have it? And I said, absolutely, because one teacher wants to use this and knows how to use it, and that's their style of teaching. But the other teacher's going to get the same message across in their own way. So I think we need to make sure that we're encouraging teachers to use our curriculum, but also to use the talents that we hired them for. And like I said, go out, look around, see what's going on in the schools. I guarantee you'll love it as much as I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt.
Arun Ayagari, 20 Brook Hill Road.
Say your name again, please.
Arun Ayagari.
Thank you.
First name Alpha Romeo, uniform November.
Got it.
All right. I'm the president of a nonprofit organization called Lead Foundation Global. We conduct a yearly, or actually annual, youth conference every year here in South River in St. Mark's Christian Academy. We're holding the third annual conference this year. Next month, which is October 13th, Sunday, from 10:00 to 2:00. There will be a group of high school students who've been preparing on a few topics for several weeks. Most of them are from East Brunswick High School. They'll be talking about, there's two panels, student panels. One is on, two are on US education. One is comparative analysis between the US education within states, and the other is US education versus foreign education. There'll be a bunch of high school students talking about that. There's also a forum where teachers will be talking about their personal teaching experiences across various districts in the state. I'm here to invite all the board members to attend that. This is in the best interest of the students. Our goal is to focus on Sustainable Development Goals set forth by United Nations. This year, we're focusing on goal number four, which is quality education. Our goal behind this initiative is to make sure we cultivate public speaking skills and leadership skills amongst our youth, specifically targeted towards students between grades eight and grades 12. What I realized is, as an educator myself, our students are fantastic academically. They have fantastic grades. But a lot of kids, well, including many adults, lack public speaking skills. So my goal through our organization is to cultivate those skills. So I'm here to invite all of you, and audience as well, all parents and students are invited. Please come. Again, it's October 13th. It's just two miles from here, South River, St. Mark's Christian Academy, from 10:00 to 2:00. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arun. If you can actually send the information or get the information to Janet and Karen, then they can forward it onto the board. That'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Wilbur Pan, 223 Milltown Road. I just wanted to mention something pretty incredible I saw earlier this week. At the town council meeting, there are two of our students, Rashini and Sahil, who are co-presidents of Youth Voice in Action. And they gave a presentation to our town council on one of the initiatives that they're working on to extend the voting age for students to be able to vote for Board of Ed elections when they reach the age of 16. I know they've talked to you about this before, and they've been working on it for a long time. What I noticed, though, is that their presentation, I've heard them present this before, is so comprehensive and really excellent. They covered this topic from a policy standpoint, from a legal standpoint, both of which I really don't know a whole lot about because it's not my area of expertise. But they also managed to cover this topic from a developmental standpoint, covering questions as to whether or not a 16-year-old is mature enough to participate in an election. And I can say, being a pediatrician, this is one of my areas of expertise, and they're completely right on in their discussion of these, of this subject. So I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge their excellent presentation, the way they prepped for it, the way they carried it off, along with the rest of the team that they brought along with them, because this is a reflection of their hard work. But this doesn't happen by itself, and it's also a reflection of their teachers and their ESPs, and I just wanted to mention that. I don't know how much time I have left, but I think, and I think Joyce left, but on the subject of buses, and I know this is going to sound critical, but I promise it's not. For our kids, when they were little and on the bus, it was actually a little bit of a routine for us, for the bus to blow right past our house on the first day of school. We actually kind of looked forward to it because, you know, tradition is... But if anyone asks me how much I care about the bus missing our house that first day of school, I don't care at all. The reason why is we've learned year over year over year that the bus drivers are just wonderful people, and they bust their butts, you know, for our kids. And I think it's a reflection of all the hard work that Joyce does, which is why I was hoping she would be here to hear this. Maybe she'll watch the recording. I don't know. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Pan.
Jen Figaroa, 101 Rus Lane. Last school year, when the budget shortfall was announced, decisions about cuts were made, and it was said that the cuts would have little impact on students, but these decisions are affecting our students. East Brunswick is known for excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. Is it excellence in academics when you lessen the amount of time seventh graders receive English instruction a week, especially after looking at the presentation of our district's decreasing performance on standardized tests? It is my understanding that although curriculum changes were made over the summer, it is a work in progress. This puts extreme pressure on teachers to teach all the necessary curriculum in a much shorter amount of time. Was there any consideration to teacher and student mental health when making this decision? The decision to move from 180 days of English instruction to 90 days for seventh graders was not communicated to the public. In fact, it was brought to light by parents who have eighth and ninth-grade students who realized their current seventh graders were receiving less instruction. Then there was an announcement posted days later on Facebook by Mrs. Herrick that the information is posted under gradebook and parent access. With all the emails and phone calls we receive, I would think that this would be one that parents would want to hear about. When I inquired about this decision, I was told by school administration that instead of the second period of English, the seventh graders received an additional elective. But after eighth and ninth-grade electives were scheduled, the seventh graders got what was left over. Many seventh graders are enrolled in elective they do not want, and for those lucky enough to get an elective, those of not lucky enough to get an elective receive study skills course. I was told they were looking to add more electives next year, but that would mean more resources. We were already told that the 2020, that the 25, 26 budget comes with more cuts, so I guess that means even less options for seventh graders next year. The decision to house our high school students in one area so the district doesn't need to pay for substitutes in the high school is a poor decision made by noneducators. At least they... At least the cafeteria has a table to work on, but what about the auditorium? Has anyone considered the health issues that may arise from students directly placing computers on their laps? What about the direct effects of heat and radiation exposure to the reproductive organs at this critical age? For one reason, the only reason this isn't happening at Churchill is due to lack of space. The school does not have a separate cafeteria and auditorium. But I do know that students at Hughes last year were housed in the JM PAC where they didn't have a sub, so don't let them fool you that it's only happening at the high school. The fact that there aren't enough textbooks is a disgrace. Every student has a right to text, but let's take this a step further. The district also decided to save money and not renew online access to textbooks for all subjects. What will students do if they are absent or miss class and need to complete an assignment using a text? Are they expected to take a zero? Along with online text, the district also decided to save money and not supply teachers with many online resources that supported curriculum. So what are teachers to do? They were told to post screenshots of the text.
Time.
Isn't that a copyright violation?
Time.
Where are students being put first? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Figaro.
Good evening, everyone. Dana and Miki, proud president of the 1,400 teachers and support staff who teach and care for the students of our school. So first of all, I just want to make a couple public announcements. On October 1st, the East Brunswick Education Association is sponsoring our seventh annual Meet the Candidates Night at the Community Arts Center and we are very happy that all 10 candidates have agreed to participate. Also, at our next board meeting in October, we will begin our very exciting series of learning across the district and our first school that we'll be presenting is Central School with Ms. Keeley back there, who will be presenting with her students. This is a real exciting opportunity for us because through NJA, we do acquire $100,000 worth of grants that we can use in the classroom and in the community and I make sure every penny of that $100,000 is spent each year. So we're very excited about that and providing some of the resources for teachers in the classroom and providing many opportunity for people in the community. And a very new, exciting development that I just was texted a few minutes ago, on March 2nd, the East Brunswick Symphony Orchestra and the East Brunswick Education Association Philanthropic Fund will be partnering for a very special concert at the Community Arts Center. And this, the money that is raised will go to the Symphony Orchestra, but also to our Philanthropic Fund, which raises, or which gives scholarship money, $2,400 for a student who is going into the field of education and boy, do we need that, right? More people going into education. So that's very exciting. And last, our East Brunswick Bears Necessity Den. I want to thank Danielle Blalock for partnering with us and helping us out, but we have a very, very robust secondhand clothing and coat and shoe and prom store at our East Brunswick office with literally thousands pieces of clothing. We are open twice a week. On our East Brunswick Education Association website, you will see our days that we're open and if anybody needs our services, please reach out to your school nurse, to your guidance counselor, to your student, student assistance specialist, or to Danielle, Danielle Blalock and they will put you in touch with us. So thank you, we're looking forward to an exciting year of lots of opportunity and exciting events, so thank you.
Thank you, Doctors Miki. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Okay, then I'm going to close the public portion. And hi to my favorite back there, Ms. Keeley. So just so you all know, I am an honorary member for class. So for Mr. Levitt, this will make you feel better, when you talk about the board members being in the buildings, I assure you that we are. Read Across America is one of my personal favorites in her class, not to play favoritism, but I'm going to, I'm sorry. We do get to the buildings. We don't walk around with clipboards, I promise you. I will tell you that most students do recognize board members. We are at a lot of different events, so you can rest easy that we are a part of the community and we are in the schools. That being said, I think Dr. Valeski would probably be a little concerned if we just started walking through buildings, so generally, board members do let Dr. Valeski know so he can inform building principals when we do go in there. But we are on, in the buildings on many occasions, whether it be to do a tour, to see something, to see all the good works that have been provided through the Education Foundation. Sometimes it's to see curricular changes, visit classrooms, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways that we get to be there. And actually, the students, especially the young ones, I think, they, they really enjoy that. So that's kind of cool. So I did want to just let you know that. So I just wanted to make a comment regarding the video that was aired this evening and some harsh things that were said to Mr. Juliana. We don't go out of our way to embarrass parents or to show them. I didn't see the face so clearly, I don't know if I would recognize a person from it. You'll notice that the child's image was, was blurred out. I can tell you, since it was brought up, this particular person and, where is it, Danielle? We do try and be responsive. I will tell you that I have always been responsive. If people ask for my cellphone, I am the first one to give it out. Not always board emails, but they're there. I know it's a little bit tricky here when you try and talk to the board. As board president, I am always available to you, but I will tell you that a gentleman that was shown on that video did reach out to me through Facebook originally, and I apologize for the indulgence in this, but just to give you kind of a quick little what happened, a gentleman reached out to me and the first thing I did when someone came to me and said they needed help was I gave him my cellphone number. And the man called me and we had a conversation and he told me he was having an issue with the transportation department. I then said that I would be happy to look into it. In doing so, I was then informed that we were in litigation with this gentleman. I then proceeded to tell him through the attorney's advice that I was unable to discuss the matter with him because it was a legal matter. He told me that he understood and then continued for the past few years to, and you talk about bullying, to send me texts and emails constantly berating me. And I was advised that I was not able to deal with this matter because it was a litigation. I am a volunteer. I don't ever, Dom, and I appreciate what you do and you save lives. So I put things in perspectives, in perspective, but when we say that we're volunteers, it's more because we put as much time as we can into this and we're here because we want to be here. This man has harassed me for years, to the point that he, he started going after my family on Facebook and going after me personally for something that I had nothing to do with this. And if you think that there is any victory lap when that was put up there, there's no victory because we never want to see somebody that could have almost harmed a child. And I, I would venture to guess, because I know I've done it, we've all, our kids have all missed a bus at some point. So I'm sure that many of you have been like I have, we've all driven our kids to school and we realize that the kid missed the bus for whatever reason. I'm not sure why this gentleman chose to, to race down the bus and, and to do that. I'm sure he was frustrated, we all get frustrated. It's not that big of a town, probably would have been easier just to take the kid to school, but I'm not going to ever judge anybody's parenting or decisions they make. But what I will do is I will say that it is really cruel to start going after people that didn't cause the situation. And it was completely appropriate in this particular case when Mrs. Fortesberg was telling you what you should or shouldn't do. We've all seen it. I've, I've watched buses that stop and somebody blows off the, the red lights, you know, I don't want to get into a debate with anybody here, but I've always said this, misinformation can be very dangerous and just because something is out there on social media does not make it true. The other thing I wanted to say, and I think Mrs. Becker is famous for always saying this, anyone that wants to run to be on the Board of Ed, you are someone that is willing to give your time and, and to volunteer. But I will also remind you, the people that come here that do campaign speeches, you are speaking to the board. You are welcome to do that. You have three minutes to say whatever you want to say, but I, I would just caution you because, as I said, it, it's not about, you know, bickering back and forth or being cruel. That there's a lot of people out there that I believe truly in my heart don't have good intentions and are just trying to take any kind of issues in the town that may be divisive or maybe unsettling to people and to try and turn it into something to, you know, capitalize on their pain and I'll never for the life of me understand that. You don't have to agree with me, with anyone up here. You don't have to agree with Dr. Valeski or the job he's doing. But the reality is, he is doing his job, in my opinion, very well. You've heard some people that are going to give you some information that, again, is meant to try and look him, make him look bad. I don't want to speak to individuals, but it's been brought up multiple times about Dr. Valeski's contract and maybe it's a misunderstanding when you talked about the intent to do harm somewhere. You have to remember something and we go through it with the Education Foundation with our principals and supervisors, there are negotiations at all times. And in this particular case, exploring something that the board felt was the correct course of action, that being an extension of this man's contract, when the budget crisis hit, it wasn't that anyone was trying to get away with anything, we weren't trying to hide anything, but the board and Dr. Valeski made a decision that that might not have been the right time. So to use that as if it was something that he was trying to sneak in there and I'll constantly hear about how he's one of the higher-paid superintendents, well, you know what? I look at anyone that does a good job and God bless them, you know? I don't know when that became something that's so awful and he certainly isn't the top and I'll tell you, if you really want to see overpaid administrators, you look around this state and you will see some incredibly overpaid administrators that don't do half the work that this man does. And I will tell you that I am on the phone with him because we both talk on the commute and every morning, somewhere around seven o'clock in the morning, we are on the phone talking about school business. I feel terrible, but Saturdays and Sundays, we are talking about school business. So I'm not going to belabor this and I apologize, I did not mean to be indulgent, but it just, it's, it's hard sometimes to constantly hear things, especially because you have three minutes to say what you want. The problem is, we, we can speak the truth on this side. We can, we can say things that are within the, the attorney's, you know, what's not going to get us in trouble, I'm trying, I apologize, I'm. But you can say whatever you want on Facebook, you can say whatever you want at that podium, there's no fact checking. And that's really hard because unfortunately, what's happened in this town and, you know, you want to call people outsiders, he's been on this board long, and I've grown up in this town, so I've been here for a pretty long time, but they're not outsiders. Dr. Valeski is at every townsmen event for 10 years and, and up until maybe six months ago, he was beloved. And I have to tell you, I just met somebody randomly that stopped me to tell me that she misses, that she saved, I'm not saying her name so I can't embarrass her, that she saved his snow messages because her child, her last child graduated last year. So I hear more good things, I just think there's a silent majority out there and there's people for their own purposes are trying to divide this community and that's heartbreaking because, as I said, I work with the people up here. I don't agree with every one of them, they don't agree with me and we feel comfortable and safe in the ability to do that. It wasn't always the way on this dais, unfortunately. And when it was brought up about the PTA and some of those charges, some of that came from board members that are no longer on this, this dais. So, you know, just be careful everything you hear because not all of the information is accurate. And I apologize because I have taken way too much time, so I don't mean to lecture at you, but it's very hard, meeting after meeting, to come here and, and there was a woman that talked about something, you know, with her child. And these are the things we want to hear because these are the things that we want to correct. And one of the reasons I always say, please leave your information with those ladies is because if it's something we don't know and that's the first I've heard of it, I want to make sure it gets fixed because no child should have to go through that. And every once in a while, there are people that come to us and tell us that. And for Danielle, and I'm not going to say her last name because I apologize, I'm probably mistaken, I don't like when people do that, you know, that is frustrating. You know, you should be able to talk to board members and, you know, as I said, I'm happy to give you my information afterwards. I do, I hear you. Everyone up here hears you, so please always feel that there's communication and there's a lot of ways to get involved with the board. There's a lot of committees where board members sit on it, you've heard of ad hoc committees, the community programs, you know, you're not, you're not being shut out of anything. This board is a very transparent board. That being said, I'm not saying there aren't mistakes. There are going to be mistakes because we're all human and I know, you know, in my job life, you know, we, we all don't get paid to be here, but we all have jobs where we get paid. And you know what? I report to a board, we all do. So I know for myself, you know, you do the best you can and there's going to be times that maybe someone disagrees with you, maybe you make a misstep. Dom, you're absolutely right, sometimes you have to, you know, apologize for a misstep and I promise you, there have been times and you know personally, there are times that we've had to, you know, made mistakes and we've had to apologize for them and that will always be the case. But sometimes I do get a little bit nervous about the fact that I think that you have to be very careful where you get your information from. So anyway, my apologies, you've heard enough of me and so I, no, no clapping, no clapping. So I am going to ask for a motion for our Board of Education items this evening, we have seven.
Just a note on that, if we pull the minutes that are on there.
Okay, he pulled, see, Bernie likes to keep me on my toes? All right. What he said. May I please have a motion? Move by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Guas, is there any discussion? Mrs. Reese.
I just wanted to mention the item four, the Contract for Living Voices. It's a very important program that happens for our eighth and ninth graders.
Hold on.
That's not under Board of Education.
No, 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 yeah, we're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Oh, did you want me to move the whole agenda? Okay, my apologies. Okay, okay, we're going to rewind, see?
Hold on, hold on.
Before I get Bernie heart attack.
You have a motion on the floor.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What he said.
So you can vote on the Board of Education and then move the rest of the agenda.
If we could please vote on the Board of Education items one through seven and I believe that is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Okay. Well, the secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Mr. Gozwami.
Yes.
Ms. Guas.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Dr. James.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
President Lax.
Yes, motion carries. Now, because I am nothing if not a team player, I am going to ask for a motion for the entire rest of this.
So move.
Move by Mrs. Becker and second by Mrs. Reese. Now, for the discussion, and it's funny that you said that because I was actually going to ask you, I was very happy to see the living voices on here and I know that you've actually been to the program a few times, so.
Yes, yes, so thank you. No, I just, this supplements what the teachers are doing, it gives them tools for discussions about some very important topics, both about the civil rights movement as well as the Holocaust. So I think especially at the ages of eighth and ninth grade, this is, these are important topics and it is, and we're very thankful to have that ability for them to talk about first-person experiences and it's done in a very tasteful and age-appropriate way that it's meaningful for the kids and I've seen kids that, you know, react very strongly to it and very, have a strong connection to the material that's presented.
And I would actually like, if I could put a request in, I, I know it doesn't always fit with our schedules, but if board members could be invited to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I'll make a point.
Yeah, no, I know we have to sometimes. Mrs. Guas.
Thanks. I wanted to make a comment about curriculum and instruction, item number one. I know everybody is super excited about course and textbook inventory, but I was. So I read through it and I have to say, this week is Band Book Week. It's important to me as a teacher. The title for this year is Freed Between the Lines. I think that Band Book Week reminds us about the importance of being able to explore new ideas and different perspectives and having the freedom to do that and the challenges that some districts and some states face about being able to provide that for their students. I would also like to say, I'm incredibly proud, looking at the list of novels that are available in the English classes to our students throughout the district, that they represent the students that are in our class. I think as, as a parent, I think as an educator, our students should see themselves on the shelves. They should see themselves in the books they read, families like theirs, people like them. And then they should also see other kinds of people so that they learn. It just, it's, everyone benefits. So I did sit and go through, I am such a geek. So I did sit and go through, I am such a geek, the Course and Textbook Inventory, and I have to admit, there's a book on the eighth-grade curriculum that I'm jealous, because I would like to get to teach it. But there were many, many books that are challenged elsewhere, and that our children have the privilege of reading, and that represent them, so I was proud.
That's great. Mrs. Herrick.
I just like.
It's the good things.
I'd like to just make a comment about, I think it's Financial Services, number four, about the grant. Through the Andrew Lloyd Webber Foundation, hopefully we'll be granted funding so that we can update the aging sound system, and aging it is, because we were at the Student Awards last year, and it was hard to, you know, obviously some technical issues with the sound. So I'm happy, I hope, that we're able to secure that grant. I know there's no timeline as to when we'll find out, but I'm happy that we're putting ourselves in.
So I'm going to piggyback on that, because I actually had that written down to ask, because it said it's for underserved. Does that mean we're going up against districts that are more financially challenged, or is it because we are able to use the fact that our theater is aged?
I think we're going to be able to use the fact that we've got aging.
So it won't hurt us that we're, okay, good.
Hoping that it won't.
I hope, no, I was very excited when I saw that, okay. Mr. Hong.
So I have two issues. So when I look at the, the HR, when I look at this stipend advisor's positions, I didn't see anything about high school yearbook club. So I, we have, the high school kid, they are going to produce a yearbook, so we don't say any teacher advisors to help them. So did I misread it, or there is no advisor? Victor, can you?
Mr. Hong, the, I was notified by Dr. Bishur yesterday that they do have a faculty member who's going to be the advisor of the yearbook.
Okay, yeah, maybe the document I got is, is.
It's a, it's a.
Next agenda.
Yeah.
We missed the deadline.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great, because the seniors, they are graduating, they are applying for college, they, they want enough time to have fun, so in such a short time, they produce 300 or 400 pages of book. Likely they will make a mistake, so we need adults, we need teachers to help them, we need community members to come out, to give them a hand, because it's likely they will always make mistakes in such a short time period. We are trying to help them to avoid serious mistake. So that's the lesson we have to learn. We need community members, please come out to help our students, to make them, to give them better experience, to help them, you know, create very good memories. So this is number one. Number two, so when I review the textbook inventory, and I realize certain textbooks are very old. For certain social study textbook, it was 20 years old. The society is totally different now from 20 years ago. The law changes, everything's changed. So if we have the money, so please, we need to update the textbook. Same thing is true for the science and math computer textbooks. They're very old ones. Now the science is totally different from 10, now it's totally different from 10 years ago, and math is, those things, we need constant update. I understand we have very limited money to budget to do this, but please pay attention to it. When we have the resource, we, please keep, give them update. That is my comments.
Could I answer?
Of course, absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Hong, so one of the things I, I do want to do, is I want to schedule a curricular update for the board, because I think it's really important for the board to understand the volume of online resources that we use in the district right now, to make sure that they are current with everything that we, that the world, the world changes day to day. And so a textbook, traditionally, how I used it when I was a student, it, it doesn't work for students anymore. That textbook becomes usually a document that's, that might be used partially during a class, or we, we do have situations right now where we don't have enough books for all the students, but they share, and we've done that for years. That's not just because of the budget situation. But online resources have been deployed quite robustly in this district, and I think it's a, you know, we, we need to reaffirm that with the Board of Education. I do want to mention, too, about the yearbook. We have, I mentioned we have, have an advisor, we have a faculty member who wants to be the advisor. But we are going to make sure this year that the yearbook, as it's built and developed, that each page is looked at multiple times by multiple people, so we have a check and a, a double check on each of those, so we don't run into the situation of having to rush things. And I, I have talked to Dr. Bishur about that. So, you know, I, I've made it very clear, this is, this is a focus this year that, that we need to take exceptional care for every page of the yearbook. So I'm thankful that we have a faculty member that wants to support the club, but I assure you, the process and production of the yearbook, including the publisher, who is going to take a larger role in ensuring that every single page is accurate before it ever goes to print.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ladies, duke it out.
No, I just had a follow. I don't want to duke anything, but, I'm just kidding. I just had a. I just had a follow-up question about the textbooks. Didn't we spend quite a few years investing in classroom sets?
We did.
So that the kids wouldn't have to, to tour around the real heavy books, so that there may not have been one book for every child, but there was a classroom set of books so that when the kids came into the classroom, they all had access? We, we did, there was, we did an investment over, it was a rotating thing over quite a few years. Bernie, am I, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we do have, might be interesting to find out, an update on where we are in terms of percentage of classrooms without that setup, you know, you don't have to go around counting class by class. It doesn't have to be by next meeting, but just food for thought. And you're talking about the online components of textbooks. Usually when we adopt a new textbook, the curriculum committee is given specifics about, oh, I'm looking Joyce, and she's not here. I'll look at Barbara. The curriculum committee is usually given specifics of the online component of the textbook, and the renewal and subscription details also. So if those were canceled for budgetary reasons, we would have been told about that, correct? It would have, if we, if we had to take away online components of textbooks, it would have been something brought to our attention.
Yeah, we shared, we, we actually shared all of those issues with the board during the budgetary discussion.
So when you talk at a, talked about a curriculum update, perhaps we could just, you know, just a general idea of the textbooks, that, the percentage of textbooks that do have online components, that are still active, that our children are able to access, and more important, our parents. But also, again, I would be interested in hearing about percentage of classrooms with a classroom set of books. Thank you.
Dr. James?
Thank you. I just wanted to voice my support for possibly expanding the amount of some of these stipends, or the, the number of faculty who get them, once it's, once it's possible. Obviously, we can't, you know, do everything, and we have to be very mindful right now with budget. But I know that these clubs are very popular, and, and some of them are very difficult to get, get into, and it's wonderful that so many of our, our staff are willing to lead them, and I think maybe we need multiple sections, actually, of some of them, because our, our kids get very excited. So I just, just wanted to flag that for down the line, as, as we're looking at those stipends, as, as a possible way that, that we could expand, because I think our extracurricular activities are, are one of the things that really make us stand out. And I know, for example, we just finally got a robotics club advisor for, for the high school after much time, so I know we're, we're trying to do exciting things there. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Just real quick, so I serve as the chair of the Policy Committee, which is awesome, and, and a great responsibility. If anybody.
Are you doing a committee update?
No, I'm not. I'm just, because this is part of the agenda, yeah. So I just wanted to share, there's a whole heck of a lot of bylaws and policies that have been updated and approved by the board in, in this session, and the majority of them, just for the public's understanding, are a result of DOE changes, mandates, you know, things that have happened at the state level predominantly, that have affected us in one way or another, and have caused us to change our language. If you are reviewing this and looking through it, when you see anything that maybe says abolished, don't let that concern you. Oftentimes, that is just something that is then redirected or put into a different policy, and it should be clearly labeled through that process as well. So I wanted to share with people as well, I mean, we have hundreds, I think it's fair to say, hundreds of bylaws and policies that govern, thousands maybe even, this, this district, and they are so crucial to our well-being as a community. If you are ever interested in reviewing or seeing those, you can go on the website, click Board of Ed. There's a tab under there, Bylaws, Policies, Regulations. And then on the left side, if you click the District Bylaws, Policies, and Regulations, it'll be redirected to a different site where you can easily search all of those bylaws and policies. The ones that were approved tonight will probably be updated by sometime late next week, because it's a, a big project. But, you know, I just wanted to thank the, the team who also works on that for assisting with that process, and you, Mr. Giuliano, for your help there as well.
Great information.
Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Mr. Gozwami.
Yes.
Ms. Gwos.
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Dr. James.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. Leading us to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board, who would like to start? Mrs. Gwos.
All right, I had a few things. I wanted to add to what Dr. Valeski said about the GMC Leadership Conference that was held recently. I wanted to add thanks to Frank Knoppenberger, who organizes. I saw him several times in the days leading up to that. I have the pleasure of waiting for small people to come running out of an elementary school with him, and he puts in so much work to organize this. And it was an interesting year, because I was on the other end of getting to talk to students from two different districts who went.
Oh, the GMC, I'm sorry.
The GMC.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, GMC. Definitely not.
Sorry, my fault.
Okay. I'm like, whoa, did I just do that?
But I got to speak to students from two different districts, who were really excited about the time that they spent and what they learned there, and a couple of them asked if they had gone in the fall, if they could go again in the winter, or what would happen, which is nice to hear from kids. I got to attend the senior parent night at the high school. I was in one of those pictures, which is a little disert, disconcerting. It was a good curl day, I guess. But I wanted to thank the counselors for the amount of time they took with the parents. I, I know that they're meeting with the seniors, and they were talking about the upcoming schedule, like, when they would have met with all of them. I know my own senior this year, and my student who graduated, both feel very, very well-handled through the process, like, they feel that individualized help, which is great. But I really, the counselor stayed really rather late to talk to parents and answer very specific individual questions, which I appreciated, because it was a school night. If you have the opportunity to go to the football, the Bear Den is really amazing, like, and, oh, and you can see Dr. Valeski, because we get to stand with him most home games, because he's there. But the Bear Den has been outrageous, like, they're taking up more than their section, the section next to them, and the section next to that. There's, actually, if you're a parent, just don't try to sit. But the school spirit is alive and well over at the high school. I don't think that that Hawaiian shirt Friday thing is catching on, but Dr. Bishur is still trying.
He's taking selfies with students, though.
He is. He's taking selfies with students, and just to give him props, the students are amazed at how many of their names he already knows. It's really actually awesome. I also wanted to piggyback on what Mrs. Lacks said, that I have had the opportunity to have tours of the schools with Dr. Valeski. I've had multiple offers to go during the school day if I wanted with Dr. Valeski to see certain things. It is always, always a pleasure to go into any of the grade levels, so I appreciate those opportunities. And I wanted to tell you, he is in the car talking to us much earlier than seven, because I catch him on the phone at 6:30 in the morning, so the man is always working. That's it for me. Thanks.
Mrs. Becker.
Well, I get him at 6:00 a.m., Heather, so I beat all.
Me and that tune. I catch at 6:30.
Um, this is gonna probably be a little corny, but I know that January 1st is the beginning of the new year, right? But to me, the year always started in September. And I, I hear people talk about it, and we joke about it, and people talk about the beginning of the year, you know, getting all the school supplies, and back-to-school clothing, and having to make lunches again, and childcare, and schedules, and who's picking up who when, and who has to be who where, figuring out carpools and transportation, all the stuff with college, it seems so overwhelming. I know it's a real, it's aggravating and a pain in the neck while you're going through it. But when your last child graduates, and September comes, and you don't have any of that, I guess what I'm saying is, is cherish every second of it. Cherish every second of it, as aggravating as it can be, because September is the beginning of the year, and it's a special time, and special time in your kids' lives for you to be a part of, too. Thanks.
It was my first, it was my first September not having, you know, my kids graduating, so I, I feel you, I feel you. But I just wanted to say thank you to the, all the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the nurses, the counselors, the staff, who've worked alongside our administrators to, again, ensure a very smooth opening to the school year. I know it's been a while since we, you know, it happened, but this is our first full meeting since the start of the school year, and I just personally want to thank all the people, including our, our transportation, also our facilities folks, I mean, everybody who makes, and the people, you know, with, and the administration as well, who make this happen. And it's, it looks seamless, but it isn't, and they spend lots of hours in making, you know, prepping for the year, and we just want to take this opportunity to say we do appreciate everything that you do. It means a lot to us and to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Herrick.
Thank you. I'll also say, I've met and toured with some board members and Dr. Valeski some schools this summer. I've also been in schools as a parent and a community member over the past few weeks, especially as back-to-school night has started. It's really exciting to see people in the school. Parents are excited, students are excited, and again, I, I've heard great things about Dr. Bishur, about the new atmosphere at the high school, how positive it is. He's out there at every varsity game, he's over by the Bear Den with Dr. Valeski and other board members that have seen him. I dropped my phone down the bleachers the other night. That was not fun. It was not fun. But it's been a lot of fun to get to attend different events as a parent, and as a community member. And so it's important, like, I really feel, you know, part of the responsibility being up here is to get out there and do as much as we can, not only up here on the dais, but in our personal lives. I also want to talk about the budget, because I know that we're going to continue to see cuts. It has been said that, and I guess I feel comfortable sharing this, because we've talked about it at CPAG meetings, that people, some legislators feel that the school funding formula is, in a lot of ways, positive, like, that it helps a lot of school districts, and that the ones that it affects negatively, that maybe there's some ways to smooth that out. But how long that will take, or what that will look like, I don't know. I don't know if anybody knows. One of my jobs here, I'll call it a job, one of, one of the things I do here on the board is, I am the liaison for New Jersey School Boards. And back in May, I was at one of the meetings where we vote on different things for the And back in May, I was at one of the meetings where we vote on different things for the delegate assembly. And it is a lot of the things that we talk about informing our budget, right? Having the state cover more special education costs, what do out of district costs look like? How can we improve school climate? But I also want to say there are other schools, other districts have been facing cuts for a long time. They have done, you know, I've been in the room with them and they have expressed having to, to do things like sell trees as a fundraising method to get back some of their funding. And they're like, how many trees can we sell? How many schools can we lease? How many schools can we sell? And they continue to lose funding. And so they cut programs, they cut teachers, they cut counselors. In New Jersey, having kindergarten, kindergarten is not mandated. So there's about six or seven districts that do not have kindergarten. Our neighbor Monroe is one of them. Monroe has been, I've been in the room with a few of the board members who have advocated for East Brunswick at one of the school board meetings in saying that, you know, we've watched South Brunswick lose funding and now we're watching our neighbor East Brunswick move funding, lose funding and we have structural problems to our school. This is what Monroe is saying. And we don't even have full day kindergarten. And so we look around us and we're disheartened and we're discouraged too. And it's hard. So I was like, okay, at this meet, you know, some of these school board meetings for New Jersey School Boards, what can I do, right? We need to get to the table more. And so they were like, oh, we have an opening to be delegate for our legislative committee. And I was like, all right, so here I am. I just found out the other day that I will be on the legislative committee to represent our district for New Jersey School Boards. So I'm hoping, you know, I know Dr. Valeski, you meet with our legislators. I know that you've been talking to people about state funding. I know it's been brought up and maybe you can touch on it for a second about your relationship with ESC New Jersey and that you're vice president and that maybe that affords us an opportunity to know some of the cost of special education funding sooner. But I don't really believe that that's the case, so I was hoping that you could talk to that.
Sure, Ms. Herrick. So there's the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. So I have been selected by the board since I've been superintendent to be the district representative to that organization as a member district. This last year I was elected vice president of the Board of Directors. We oversee the operation of the commission, which provides opportunities for districts to do cooperative purchasing, but most importantly, they serve a population of very special need students. As of today, I believe we have four of our East Brunswick students that attend the commission schools. But the commission schools are not part of the private out of district placement schools that, that people typically hear about. The out of district placements that, as you look on the agenda, that many of our students go to, we send them, we pay a tuition, but those adjustments come later in the year when they assess what their real costs are. And they send those adjustments to the district without notice and without any ability of the district to forecast what those changes are. And those impacts have to be paid because those children are identified as needing those specific services. And it's usually because we can't provide that service in the district with our own staff, although there has been a great, great amount of work over the past couple of years to bring students back to East Brunswick and to build those programs out. But, but some of our students have very specific and very intense needs that can't be met by our district. So when they are out and when those costs are passed on, we are obligated to pay them and that, that becomes a financial burden on the district. But that is not the same as belonging to the executive or the, the commission. Those, those are costs that are set and we do know what the tuition is and, and so, but that is a small percentage of the students that receive out of district placement.
Great, thank you. I just want to let, remind everybody or let people know in case you don't know about CPAG, we have our next meeting on October 16th. It is going to include a presentation on inclusiveness and it'll be at the East Brunswick Public Library. If you would like more information, you can feel free to reach out to Rose right back there, if you're here in person. If not, you can reach out to Louise Saltana at the district and she will get you more information. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go quick. All right, three things. One, I serve as the liaison to the Human Relations Council. I just wanted to, kind of piggybacking off of some of the AI trainings that are coming up, we're actually, that, the council is looking at hosting a, an AI event as well, coincidentally. So, so keep an eye out for that. I'll have more updates on that soon. That should hopefully be happening before the end of the year and it'll be largely guided by or built, the program will be built, built by students. So it's going to be really cool to have them participate in that. I wanted to share that with everybody. Communication, real quick, and I'm sorry to keep talking about the website. On the website, Board of Education, board members, scroll to the bottom and there's a board email address right there. Anybody can email at any time if you have any issues and it will come to all of us. So that is there, that is open to the public and that is one way of, of, you know, sharing your concerns, your needs. Can't necessarily say that it will be responded to, just per, you know, different ordinances or laws that we are obligated to abide by, but it is a way of getting information here and to the extent that we're able, we'll, you know, report that back and work with you to make sure that we're, we're doing our best to help people. Finally, I wanted to share, I went to the Churchill Back to School Night last night and I just have to say, the energy was electric. It was an amazing experience. It, it's such an honor, I have an eighth grader there and it, it's just such an, it was just awesome. I mean, on every level it was awesome. The teachers are amazing. You know, there was a lot of just great energy in the air between the clubs and the different programs that, that helped to support and uplift this district and it was just really a pleasure. So I just wanted to thank everybody. I know this is our first meeting back since the start of school. My kids have had an incredible journey so far. My barometer, when I'm out in the community and talking to people, is, is asking them the same question, how are your children doing in our schools? And for the most part, they're doing great, right? That is what I'm hearing. Not to say that there's not room for improvement, there's always room for improvement. There's always things like the woman who spoke tonight that we don't know about, me personally, right? I have not interacted with her before. We have to address those and, and we will, and, and I have full confidence in our administration to take care of those things. But I am just so grateful to be a part of this community and to have my children, most importantly, be under the, the care and the direction of the incredible professionals who make up our district. And I just wanted to express my gratitude.
Thank you, Tim. Well said. I, I just wanted to thank again my colleagues for their swift action on PTA and booster club fees and I, and I wanted to really thank my fellow parents for their advocacy. And just say, in the spirit of communication and clarity, that we're, we're now back to where we were with the PTAs and boosters and I can speak firsthand to this, where we were told in August 2023, so way back some time ago, that we would no longer have our, our one additional school security officer, our, our SSO paid for by the district. But there was a year given, given to budget for, for that. And I, and I just want to make sure, for the good of the cause, that everyone knows that, you know, there's no charge for, for meetings and there was never going to be any charge for meetings, there's no facilities charge. And I, I think it's really important that we do meet in our home schools. I was just at my son's PTA meeting and it's a way to build community and meet other parents in a safe space and have pride in where our students are. And so I think that's something that, you know, we can all be really proud of and that we all support. Additionally, I'd like to report that I spent the first morning of school, first of all, running around and cooking breakfast, but second of all, with my fellow board member, Lee Wu-Hang at Hammershold. And we were able to, with Dr. Valeski's blessing and thank you for setting that up at six in the morning, we didn't give much notice, we were able to observe the school's opening and security procedures. And we were very concerned about security because there was a school shooting the prior day, unfortunately, in another place in the country. And we met with Principal Petronco and we were happy to see things getting off to a great start. And one of the things that I wanted to highlight is that the cafeteria glass, Hammershold has beautiful glass looking into the cafeteria and, and that glass has now been frosted because while it is beautiful, you can actually see from the parking lot into the Hammershold cafeteria. It's a, it's a completely clear line of sight. And unfortunately, in today's day and age, to be able to see how many students there are present is actually not, is not the good thing that it once was, right? And we want the kids to be able to be safe. So to have them behind that frosting, you can't see if there's anyone there actually now, but it does still let the light in and keep some of that good feel. So Lee Wu and I were happy to be walk through that and really be walk through the security procedures. And I just also wanted to thank our East Brunswick Police Department and highlight that collaboration. The department obtained a grant for the first few days of school to do extra traffic control and extra security. And I was outside with one of the armed officers and I think that that really helped things to, to move smoothly at the district, throughout the district, which I, which I wanted to highlight that partnership. So thank you so much.
So additionally, Dr. James' comment, I want to send Dr. Valeski answer my call at six AM in the morning. Give me and Dr. James permission to go to Hammershold. Without his permission, I will not show up that day, but he gave us the permission. So we went there, so we, I witnessed how smooth the first day Hammershold had, the beautiful job Ross Petronco and his team did. They deserve a lot of credit. Additionally, I want, I, I want to thank all the teachers. So many teachers arrived at school a lot earlier than their contract time. Some teacher comes almost one hour early than the school starting time. You know, by contract, they only need to report to school five minutes before the time. So they deserve a lot of credit. Additionally, I want to send Dr. James to go with me. You know what happened? She carried her infant baby with her and I'm so moved. So this lady is really want to help school. Before he, she was appointed to the, to the position, she came to the board meeting several years. That's why I got to know her, I pay attention. Why this lady always came to the board meeting? She didn't make any comment, she's sitting there quietly listening and then I approached her. She really cares about this, our, this, our school. So I'm, that's why I, I have very good time. We spent there, we check out the security, we, I witnessed the East Brunswick Police Patrol cars running around and security check out every school bus when the bus arrived, but, and they check everyone who approaching the school bus. Very good job. Thank you, Victor.
Okay, well, for the Giants fans out there, you could probably make the second half. So I am going to call for a motion to adjourn. Move by Mrs. Becker?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you guys so much. Get home safe and go Giants if you like them.